Jared, does Simon have a package of... Okay. Um, did Simon get a package of materials? Okay. He had to get some of his materials, so... I'll call this city council meeting to order. He's coming.
So, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to let you know that Councilmember-elect Simon has been very, very nice to me, and I wondered why. Well, come to find out is that he wants for me to give him item number 11. And I said, "Absolutely not." That stays with the senior members of the council.
No question.
You know, he's a rookie.
Well, and we don't want him to mess it up the first evening, right?
Exactly.
With that being said, newly-minted Councilmember Troutman, would you like to step up and be sworn into office?
I'd be honored.
Could you step down to the dais, and our city clerk will administer the oath.
I, Simon Troutman.
I, Simon Troutman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota...
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Richfield...
And the Charter, Ordinances, City of Richfield.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge...
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge.
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office.
Of City Councilmember Board One.
Of City Councilmember.
According to the law...
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability and understanding...
And to the best of my ability and understa...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Troutman, not to put any additional pressure on you, but you should be aware of the fact that that seat... The occupants of that seat in the last 25 or 26 years are all in the audience, watching you carefully. Making sure that your pronunciation is correct, you articulate well, and that your thoughts are deep and concise. Correct, Ms. Rosenberg?
Thank you. Those are big shoes to fill.
Seeing there was nothing for the open forum, at this time, I would ask you all to stand in Pledge of Allegiance flag with me. At this time, I would ask for a motion seeking the approval of the minutes of the Special Joint City Council and Housing and Redevelopment Authority Work Session of May 15, 2017; the Special City Council Work Session of May 24, 2017; Special Joint City Council and Civil Service Commission Work Session of May 24, 2017; and the Special City Council Meeting of May 24, 2017; and Special City Council Meeting of May 26, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are passed.
Mandel wanted to speak, and I forgot to mention that to you.
It's totally appropriate. Ms. Mandel, feel free.
I just wanted to mention a very exciting event that is going to happen right here on the property of the Richfield Municipal Building. It'll be on Saturday, June 24, starting at 2:00. And it will be the dedication of a piece of sculpture that was donated, created and donated by a very well-known Costa Rican artist. And he will be here for the dedication, as will the young child that was the model for the sculpture. So we're looking forward to it. We've had some great cooperation from the Richfield Arts Commission and from the Richfield Dual Language School and the Richfield Soccer Association. So we're thinking it's going to be a great day, and we hope everyone that is available will come and meet the artist and see the new sculpture.
Now, when is it going to be and what time?
June 24, which is a Saturday, starting at 2:00 p.m., right out behind the building here.
Okay, good.
Okay?
Thank you, Ambassador.
You're welcome.
Prior to convening the city council meeting this evening, we had, I think, our first annual Commissioner recognition event. It's something that we should have been doing more often, more frequently, and has a benefit to the Commissioners that do such good work for the city. The Commissioners cover all sorts of areas: transportation, Planning Commission, human rights, Arts Commission, Friendship City, Community Services. And these are all individuals that come in, spend a Saturday morning being interviewed. And I think, as I said, the count was an uncounted number of hours, both in meetings and doing their own homework and preparing for the responsibilities they've assumed as volunteers for the city that give us information, provide background, suggestions, recommendations, and everything that help make our decision making a lot easier and a lot more in tune with what the residents of the community are feeling and voicing that we sometimes hear, but not always, and sometimes we're not listening, I have to admit. So it's nice to have Commissions that come and meet with us and have liaisons. Each of the council members is a liaison to various Commissions. So we're interacting all the time and making sure that what we're discussing and what we're voting on, that we're getting input from the real people behind what happens up here, and that's the citizens in the community itself. So I want to thank all the Commission members once again. Before we get to hats off to hometown hits, we need to figure how we are going to proceed on the Fourth of July Parade. Walk, unicycle, longboards, shortboards, roller skates?
I'll be on some type of interesting bicycle that I'm going to try to get from a community member.
Okay, are you going to get five of them, or are you going to go it alone?
I... Oh, I can get as many as we want, so...
I guess, can you define interesting for me?
Well, there's lowrider bicycles. There's ones with, you can put two people on them. There's ones that you can have people sit across. There's all different kinds.
You know what I'm thinking is the two-seaters might not be a bad idea, because that way, Mike and I can keep up and not have to run half blocks after... We get waylaid by the children passing out candy, and we end up a block or two behind. So we could have a peddler and a hander. How's that?
I would say I just feel like we've got something to prove this year, Mayor Elliott, with delivering the candy. I think we ran out again halfway through. So there's room for improvement. But I'd like to hoof it again and get out there and shake some hands and hand out some candy. Except this year, getting all the way through, I feel like.
There clearly is room for improvement. If you all are handing out candy, I think we need to hand out maybe some clementines or fruit, a healthier option. We should not be promoting handing out candy.
Oh, it's a parade. How many boxes of clementines can you carry?
I gave out clementines, and people loved it last year at Fourth of July.
How quickly did you run out?
We, you know, not everybody got one, but...
Well, I would have to beg out on this, Mayor, because I know that Wade Brent, Brent Wade, is that right? Brent Wade, from Richfield, Mississippi, would be really disappointed if I didn't ride in the car he provides.
Well, I would be disappointed if you weren't there, because we do need someplace to jump up and rest.
Right, that's true. And you need someplace to store the candy. So I'm always sacrificing...
Do you have a consensus this year that we'll be riding some sort of bike?
Yep, got it.
Or we could, you know, this is a city that values multimodal transportation, so...
Exactly.
If someone's riding a car, someone's riding a bike, someone's walking, that seems like a Richfield way to go about it.
Well, get me a list, and I'll make the assignments.
All right, sounds good.
We do have a guest visitor tonight that has a couple things she'd like to say. County Commissioner Debbie Gutell, ex-Mayor of Richfield, would you like to speak up and address the audience, ma'am?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be back home. I really enjoy being here and seeing you. And it's really interesting being on this side of the pulpit now and talking to you. But, you know, to that end, I want to thank everyone for the great support that I got out of Richfield to go to the County Commissioner. And in that vein, I am having my first open house in Richfield this Saturday at the Farmer's Market, because you know I love the Farmer's Market. I'm going to the Richfield Farmer's Market at 9:00 to 10:30. Please come, come visit with me. I'll just have a very short speaking, and then I'll ask... You can ask all kinds of questions. But I'm also going to make sure that we have some wonderful farmer market treats there. So my aides are coming down early and going to buy the mini donuts and the moomoos and all the things you'd love to eat at the Farmer's Market. And we'll let you taste them in the Arts Building right there. So please join us this Saturday from 9:00 to 10:30. I have a couple of pictures, too. You know, I was able to attend the Memorial Day service, which I always enjoy in Richfield. You always have such a great speaker. And I got a couple of pictures of the Brigadier General. I'm just going to put them up here. Put the two pictures up, they're right down there. There's one that maybe you can mount with a bit. This is the Brigadier General over in Dawson's. And I have to get a couple of other pictures.
Didn't have to Benfire, did you?
One to you so that you can have it for your memories and everything like this. But I appreciate it when people take pictures and send them off to me. And some of them, you might see some of them in my newsletters and things like that. But thank you for inviting me here, and I really appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Going on the fridge. Onto hometown hits. Councilmember Garcia, I would expect you have a wealth of interesting tidbits for us.
Thank you, Mayor. I will commence with the twins free baseball clinic. That's coming up on June 24, which is a Saturday, at Roosevelt Park. There is no registration required, but you must bring your own glove. And if it's bad weather, then they will move to the Richfield High School, the main gym. So make sure you put that on your calendar. And it's really been successful in the past, and a lot of youngsters participate, whether you're a boy or a girl. Baseball clinic, you get a lot of good tips. And then, I went to Richfield Lake, the old Lindell Garden site, and looked at the amphitheater and the oven that they had and the other amenities that were made possible through the Met Council. And, you know, really, really beautiful. You know, the... I think the staging area really looks nice. The oven looks nice. It's a build-up platform. They've got a thing where you can air up the tires of your bike, where you can drink water, where you can have your little tyke, who's a little smaller, drink water. And you can also fill your water container. So I would urge you to stop by. They're going to be having a series of music performances. And I don't have all that information, but if you look at the city website, you should be able to find them. Or if not, look at the Community Services website. And so that will... They are going to have the dedication June 21 from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And there'll be music there for us to enjoy. But just the sheer tranquility and beauty, I mean, they've done fantastic work. And finally, we've got pickleball, which is coming on June 21 at Washington Park. And that is from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. Pickleball is kind of a game that's a combination of three or four different games, and it's kind of geared to seniors. So, I mean, you kids won't be able to participate. But it is... It promises, I think, to be a lot of fun. They're building a number of courts there, and probably the largest courts in the state of Minnesota. So it's something that David Gebner has really been instrumental in working on and putting together. So please join us on the 21st at Washington Park, 5:00 to 7:30, seniors. And of course, everyone's welcome. And that's about it, Mayor.
Well, thank you much. And Councilman Troutman, get used to following Councilmember Garcia, who pretty much takes all the oxygen out of the air.
Very good. Yeah, well, there are a couple of things that you mentioned that I was going to mention. One thing I'd point out, it's just good news that the street construction on the 66th Street project is coming along really nicely. So there's already blacktop down for most of that section. So the Great Dust Bowl of 2017 is drawing to a close, and that's looking great. And also, this is just a small thing, but I was shopping at Lakewinds this week and noticed for the first time, they have kombucha on tap, which is a great, really refreshing beverage. And so it's wonderful to just go shopping at Lakewinds and just be able to enjoy that while you're shopping. So it's right when you come in on the fruit section and just totally made my shopping experience better.
Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez.
What I'd like to share today is just a little bit different. Usually, I have some events that I want to share in the community. But today, I just want to make a statement. I don't know if it's the summer or what. I feel like a completely different person. I think in the summer, the weather's just great. But I just want to say, I am just so proud to be a Richfield resident and on the Richfield City Council. I think we have such a great, amazing residents, kids, staff. And I've just been seeing it every day, and it just makes my day, no matter what happens, at work or outside. Coming home to Richfield is just... I feel so fortunate. And I think about the Fourth of July Parade and festivities coming and how the community, from all walks of life and all parts of Richfield and from outside Richfield, come together. So I'm really looking forward to that. And the music in the parks that's coming up as well. The event that we just had now to celebrate with our Commissioners and the volunteers who dedicate so much time to the boards and commissions, but also a lot of time to the community themselves. I see so many families walking and biking, pushing strollers, walking their dogs and their pets on our trails on the east side and all over the community. I've been thinking about the work that our staff and our residents have been doing to get as much community input as possible on the comprehensive plan update and how engagement has really been front and center and the Memorial Day service. So I just think about all the things that make Richfield so amazing, and it's really the residents and the dedication of our staff and community members. And tonight, actually, I don't know if the council and staff know this, but tonight, we are receiving Richfield, as well as several of our community partners are receiving an award from the Metropolitan Interfaith Coalition on Affordable Housing for the work that we have all been doing together, specifically with the Seasons Park Project. And that, again, is another example of staff, council, community members, and organizations working together. So it's just an observation I want to make that I see every single day and really privileged and proud to be a part of this community.
Thank you, Councilmember Howard.
It is a good day for several reasons. First, I just wanted to welcome Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you.
I feel like we're at full strength up here. I had the opportunity to serve with Councilmember Troutman when he was a Commissioner on our Human Rights Commission. And firsthand, just got to see Simon, how he works. And I just look forward to your thoughtful approach and the good ideas. I think we're a stronger council now that we're at full strength and just really look forward to serving with you. And that makes this an exciting day. Everyone's already mentioned it. The Commissioner recognition event was just wonderful. I want to thank our Commission members who came. I was just so impressed with the turnout. It's kind of a little bit of that you throw a party and you don't know who's going to come midweek, and everyone's busy. But so many of our Commission members came, and I think that just shows their excitement and commitment to the city. And it was just wonderful to see Commission members from different Commissions interacting, getting together, and the chance to just acknowledge how important their work is to the city. And I'm sure this will be something that we will repeat in the future. And it just was a fun, great event. A couple other items of note. The pool is open. A day like this, I could see it being a good place to take a dip. And lastly, I just want to mention, we had a work session before this meeting to talk about our core values and our visioning document as a council that comes out of our work session, where our council spent three, four hours with staff talking about really all the kinds of things we value as a city, the issues that are going to be now and in the future, and how do we organize ourselves? And how does staff organize in a way that we can sort of all be pulling together, all focusing on the priorities that are important for our future? And the product was just an exciting document. Our staff did very great work to organize some of the thoughts that council members shared with each other. And we'll do a good job of publicizing this document. I really want the public to take a look at the core values that this council is putting forward and the issues we want to tackle. But just one that I just want to highlight on, and the first one, we were talking about our core values, is "Lead the Way." And I think that's the one that really sort of hits on where we're headed as a city, that Richfield is in this great place to move forward and to be a leader on so many issues that are driven by putting our community first and making this a more welcoming, inviting place for really all comers. And that phrase, "Leading the Way," I think, is what has been happening and what's going to carry our work forward. And that's why there's so much reason for excitement. So that is all for me.
Thank you. Earlier, we'd spoken about our mode of transportation for the Fourth of July Parade. And I just want to read something that was on the Richfield Community page from the Chair of the Fourth of July Committee. Apparently, because there was a turnover on the Commission. It's a brand-new Commission with a lot of energy and a lot of new ideas. And I just want to read what the Chair had to say to disabuse any notions that it was going to be any lesser or anything different than what we were used to. So she went out, she said that, "I want to take a few minutes and clear up some confusion. Although it's a brand-new committee, there is very much fun-filled three days of Richfield Fourth of July events happening this year. Nothing has been canceled. In fact, things have been added, like a live radio broadcast by Radio Ray, primetime wrestling featuring Mike Howard."
The 10-year-old inside of me is actually pretty excited about that event, so...
Calvin and Michael tag team. "And so much more fun. Please help me and the community that has been working so, so hard and passing along that nothing is leaving. It's only getting better. Can't wait to celebrate with this great community." So I want everybody there, I want you celebrating, and I want you to have the great time that we get every year when we go over there. Couple other things. I got an email, and I would venture to say other council members and perhaps staff have been approached about the Mayor's National Climate Action Agenda. We discussed this, I think, in a meeting we had with the Social Justice Committee, and indicated that under Mayor Gutell's leadership about, and with staff, about six years ago, we started the greening the community. It's a four-step process. We actually have progressed through three steps already and are on the last step. So I'm not discounting the fact that the Mayor's National Climate Action Agenda may be something we might want to entertain and take a look at. I defer to staff, give me some info, get us some information. We can make that decision. But I want the community to know, we've been working and moving in that direction for a long time. And just a small indicia of the types of things we do is a council member, or memorandum that came out on June 8, and it's advising that, consistent with our City Parks Master Plan, we're introducing minimal mowing areas at various parks. And what we're doing is telling the community, it may look unruly, it may, we get calls on the six-inch weed. But the reason we do that, there's areas of the parks that don't get used. And by doing minimal mowing, we reduce carbon emissions, we save staff time and resources, and increases opportunities to place pollinator natural ornamental plantings. So that's what we've been doing for the last six or seven years. So I'm not discounting signing on Mayor's National, whether or not it improves the city. I'm not really all about symbolism. If it's going to benefit the city and benefit the communities, I'm all about it. But we'll do our homework, and we'll figure out if it's what the city wants to do, so... Last thing is, there's a breakfast fundraiser that's really important to the community and anybody that's ever been exposed to spousal abuse or anything along those lines. It's a cornerstone, it's having its 2017 breakfast fundraiser Tuesday, June 20, at 7:30 to 8:30 at the Metropolitan Ballroom in Golden Valley. This is their opportunity to raise funds, to be able to commit their resources to preserving and protecting people that are subject to domestic assault, domestic abuse. It's an extremely important group, nonprofit, that assists people find safe alternatives and get out of households where they're continually at risk. So if you have an opportunity, go to the breakfast. If you have a couple extra bucks, please make a contribution. Thank you. At this time, I would seek a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And with that, we turn everything over to the City Manager for the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. For those in the audience, the consent calendar contains several separate items, which are going to be acted upon by the City Council in one motion. And once the consent calendar has been approved, all the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, requiring no further action. Tonight, there's several items, beginning with item A, consideration of the approval of a Hennepin County Sports Agreement on behalf of Seven Hills Preparatory Academy for a $25,000 grant to fund playground equipment on their campus and to authorize the staff to execute the agreement. Item B is consideration of the approval of a resolution ordering the abatement of conditions creating a hazardous building and a public health and safety nuisance existing at 6944 Pleasant Avenue South in Richfield. Item C is consideration of the approval of the implementation of the Bicycle Master Plan, identified bike routes in the 2016 Millin Overlay area as recommended by the Transportation Commission. Item D is consideration of the approval of a resolution approving Cooperative Agreement Number 171037 with the Metropolitan Council for the restoration of the Portland Avenue Roundabout intersection at 66th Street. Item E is the consideration of the approval of a request for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the activity scheduled to take place on July 4, 2017, for the Minneapolis-Richfield American Legion Post 435 located at 6501 Portland Avenue South. Item F is consideration of the approval of a request for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Church of the Assumption, located at 305 77th Street East, for their 140th anniversary celebration taking place on... 140th anniversary celebration taking place on August 18th through 20th, 2017. And then finally, item G, which is consideration of the approval of an annual request for a community celebration event license with request for a fee waiver and a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Fourth of July Committee for the event scheduled to take place at Veterans Memorial Park, July 3rd and 4th, 2017. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
Thank you. Any comments? This time, I would move the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar passes. Items five and six have been assigned to Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez.
Item five is a continuation of the public hearing and second reading of a transitory ordinance vacating 17th Avenue Street right-of-way adjacent to the proposed Plaza 66 Commercial Development to June 27th, 2017. Interstate Development is proposing a multi-tenant commercial building along 66th Street between 16th Avenue and Richfield Parkway. The developer has purchase agreements in place for all properties within the project boundary and is requesting the vacation of right-of-way immediately adjacent. The right-of-way currently provides access to two homes at 6608 and 6614 17th Avenue. These properties and the right-of-way are proposed to be incorporated into the development, and there will no longer be a public need for the streets right-of-way. There was a delay in reviewing the title commitments for the 17th Avenue right-of-way. Additional review time by staff and the city attorney is needed. No issues are anticipated. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing to consider a transitory ordinance vacating 17th Avenue Street right-of-way adjacent to the proposed Plaza 66 Commercial Development, approximately 66th Street and 17th Avenue, to June 27th, 2017.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I would just suggest that in regards to the continuance of it, anytime you have a public hearing and meetings such as this, we have publication notices. And because of some of the delays in organizational things that didn't get done, it didn't get published in time. So the public meeting was opened tonight, continued for additional comment and testimony till July 27th. With that being said, if there's anybody here that would like to speak to this issue, it is a public meeting, it's open, you can testify tonight, or you can reserve your comments and come back on the 27th when it will be reconvened. So if nobody wants to speak at this meeting, then I would move we adjourn the meeting until June 27th, at which time it will be recalled and testimony will be taken. Is that proper procedure? Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item six.
Item six is a continuation of the public hearing and second reading of a resolution for a preliminary plat of the Plaza 66 in Richfield. Addition that will be combine six parcels, 6609 16th Avenue, 6615 16th Avenue, 6608 17th Avenue, and 6614 17th Avenue, and two adjacent remnant parcels. The adjacent 17th Avenue right-of-way in order to allow construction of a multi-tenant commercial building to June 27th, 2017. In conjunction with an application for the planned unit development, Plaza 66, at 66th Street and 16th and 17th Avenue, Interstate Partners will be replating the site. The proposed plat for the Plaza 66 in Richfield addition has been reviewed by the city's Attorney Office. Prior to consideration of a final plat application, Interstate Development will be required to satisfactorily address all comments. No major issues are anticipated. In order to have this item considered simultaneously with the approval of vacation of a portion of 17th Avenue, which has been subject to a minor delay, this item should be continued to the June 27th meeting. I would like to make the motion to continue the public hearing to consider a resolution for a preliminary plat of Plaza 66 in Richfield. Addition that will combine six parcels and adjacent 17th Avenue right-of-way for a multi-tenant commercial building to June 27th, 2017.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And once again, similar situation, publication didn't occur in time. So the, if anybody wishes to speak to this issue, they can testify today or reserve their comments until June 27th. If that's the case, then we move to adjourn, continue, and take testimony on June 27th. Sounds like that's the deal. Item seven, Commissioner, or Councilmember Howard.
I have consideration of the approval of the first reading of an ordinance abolishing the Police Civil Service Commission, repealing subsection 305 dot zero five of the city code that creates a joint police and fire civil service commission and adopting a new subsection 305 dot zero five to continue the fire civil service commission. For more than 70 years, the Richfield Police Department's hiring and promotional processes have been governed by a police civil service commission and rules and regulations promulgated by the commission and approved by the City Council. The commission's rules include strict guidelines and processes for hiring and promotions that are based on requirements mandated by state law. State law allows for very little flexibility in how these processes are carried out. In March 2017, the City of Richfield initiated a promotional process improvement and diverse recruitment study. The study was conducted by attorney and consultant Michelle Soldo of Soldo Consulting, P.C. Ms. Soldo is an expert in the area of employment and labor law and has advised other Minnesota cities and civil service-related issues. As a result of the study, Ms. Soldo's primary recommendation was that the city should consider abolishing the Police Civil Service Commission. Her recommendation is based on the following factors. One, the civil service form of governance was implemented by state law in the early 1930s, and its original objective was to separate hiring and firing of officers from council and local politics. This concern is no longer prevalent, given that the city has subject matter experts, city manager, human resource professionals, labor attorneys, and unions to carry out these duties. Two, Richfield is one of only 17 Minnesota cities still utilizing a police civil service commission out of over 800, which further signals the decline of this form of governance. The commission is comprised of community members who typically have not had professional background or expertise in police department recruitment, hiring, and promotions. Number four, the role of the commission has been greatly reduced over the years as the rules delegate many of the functions to the police chief and discipline and terminations are governed by union contracts. And number five, the most important reason for the recommendation is that if the commission is not abolished, the city cannot participate in diversity-focused officer hiring programs because of the constraints placed on the city by state civil service laws and the commission's rules. For all these reasons, staff is recommending that the City Council abolish the Police Civil Service Commission of the City of Richfield. The action requires unanimous approval by the council. If the council approves the action, it would not impact the Fire Civil Service Commission, which would continue. And I'm wondering if Ms. Soldo, who's here, would want to talk a little further about the report or just comment a little bit. I thought it was an excellent report. We had a work session, but it'd be great to just hear you describe a little bit about it. Thank you.
Councilmembers, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, thanks for the opportunity. Actually, your summary was excellent.
Excuse me, the mic is adjustable. Can you move it up?
Better?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that was a good summary. And it really does hit home the points that I was trying to make. So the reason, in March, as you mentioned, the city had me come in to look at the promotional hiring process, and I began by looking at the enabling legislation for your civil service commission, which governs the rules around hiring, promotion, all of that. And once I took a look at that, I mean, the purpose of the study was to improve the processes currently in place for promotions in the police department. There have been some challenges to that process that have been successful, and so the idea was to look at it and to determine, you know, how is it that we can improve the process? And also look at the added feature of what are the diversity efforts the city is banking in terms of recruitment, which is really a necessary process improvement step? Every direction that I looked in terms of the rules, and I looked at the processes in place, and for the reasons that you named, I'm recommending that the commission be abolished, primarily because the rules are antiquated. There really isn't the need, you have subject matter experts here, that the commission delegates all of the primary responsibilities to, except for three, really. And that is approving a process that's recommended by the hiring authority. The second function is certifying a promotional hiring list once the process is completed. And the third, written in the commission rules, is that the commission will hear termination appeals. And that hasn't happened since the 1990s, because we have union contracts now that have election of remedy provisions. So the reason, or the way that I got to the recommendation that the commission should be abolished is because I was really finding myself recommending Band-Aid fixes, really saying to this city, the way that you're going to improve this process is, you're going to have to fix this here and adjust this there, and we're going to have to do some retraining, and you're going to have to revamp the rules. And so I had this very long and convoluted explanation for how the rules needed to be fixed. And then it occurred to me that we are trying to fix a dinosaur, right? And so I really took a look to see what is happening around the state, and that's where I determined from a League of Minnesota Cities study, 880 cities, only 22 have civil service commissions, combined police and fire, 17 have police civil service commissions. This city is one of 17. I went to look at why it is the civil service commissions were no longer in place in most cities, and it was for the reasons that I'm recommending. The primary reason, though, I would say for this city is that your current commission rules, by statute, it says that there must be a promotional examination, and that really impairs, almost precludes this city's ability to hire and recruit diversely. So there isn't an opportunity to participate in diverse hiring programs, and that was one of the objectives of the study, was to determine how is it that we can best create a promotional process that exposes this city to diverse candidates, some that are recognizable by the community that served here. And my determination was, that will not happen with the commission in place. One of the things my report talks about, and it's just, I guess, a final point I'd like to mention, and beyond that, I'm happy to answer questions, but there were some concerns raised in other cities where the commission was abolished about community involvement, because the civil service commission brings in three community members, right, who have some say about and some input for the police department. And this police department already has a solution to that fashion, and that's a multicultural diversity committee. It's a, it's a community-engaged committee. It has 24 or so members on it, which is, you know, eight times more than commission involvement, and they have a role that would be advisory in nature. And the police department can get the kind of input, more input, really, more valuable input than it could get from a commission. So that's really the basis for my recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We very much appreciate the report.
Sure.
Yeah, and I share Councilmember Howard's assessment that when we had the work session with you, the points were laid out very clearly, and I think the primary motivation, you know, was not to take half the commission's responsibilities away, but was to create a commission that assists the city in creating diversity and allowing the public safety officers and the police chief to be able to try to get a public safety department that reflects the diversity of the city. And this was a step that had to be made to move in that, in that direction. So I think it was, it's always a tough decision when you, when you cut off some of the responsibilities. At the same time, it's a signal of moving forward for the community, so it's the right decision. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I have a few other comments, but perhaps I'll make the motion, and then folks can weigh in. The motion is to approve the first reading of an ordinance abolishing the Police Civil Service Commission, repealing subsection 305 dot zero five of the city code that creates a joint police and fire civil service commission and adopting a new subsection 305 dot zero five to continue the fire civil service commission.
Second. Comments?
I had a few, and we've, thank you again for detailing the report that really lays out the reason, reasoning why this makes the most sense. Just the fact that we're 18, one of 18 or 17 out of 800 cities, it just, this is an example where we're behind the curve where we want to be ahead of the curve. And I want to call out and thank Police Chief Henthorn for, and our public safety, for working to figure out how to lead on these issues and diverse hiring. In fact, I wonder if the chief would just comment about his work in the, helping put together the SLEDA program and work to be creative in how we look at hiring and why this is something that's, you know, important for a city like Richfield.
Thank you, Councilmember Howard. Several months ago, I got together with several other chiefs, and we looked at a program on how we could better diversify our police departments. And one of the things we looked at was the fact that, being that the numbers are down, approximately 30% of traditional students going through law enforcement programs, we looked at the state patrol's model of going and recruiting the non-traditional student, which is the student that has a two-to-four-year degree, has graduated, maybe is looking at making a career change to law enforcement, and being able to recruit those individuals into an academy from suburban law enforcement departments. So the three of us, Bloomington, St. Louis Park, and Richfield, got together with our human resources coordinators and came up with really a unique program to recruit non-traditional students. And that's where, Richfield, as part of a civil service commission, we sort of had to put our part on hold because of the civil service rules and regulations, we could no longer participate. But that program has moved forward, but we were one of the foundation members of that committee to put that program forward. And since then, there's been state funding. That was approved by the legislature, matching grant funding up to, I believe, $35,000 per candidate to put them through what we call the Suburban Law Enforcement Training Academy. So with us not being in civil service, we're able to participate in those programs. Out of 350 applicants, they had approximately 46%, I believe, were people of color. I can tell you from the last five or six processes we've done, we average 100 applicants. Our numbers are only at about 15 to 20% people of color. So we're very excited to be able to go out and do some initial hiring and come up with some new initiatives.
Thank you, Chief. And just want to comment on the why, you know, why do we want to have a diverse police force that's reflective of the community? There's, a lot of it's just intuitive, but there's research that backs it up, that having a police force that's reflective of the community builds community trust, and it improves the ability of our city to keep our residents safe. So to, and it's an area where we are behind the curve, you know, we, we need to do more to make sure that our police force is reflective of our community. And leadership and, like Chief Henthorn, and looking at creative ideas to do that is what it takes. You know, one of the things we reviewed in coming to this decision is a report or a literature view put together by the U.S. Department of Justice, the Civil Rights Division. And that report detailed, you know, why this issue is so important for a community like Richfield. And it was important enough, I just wanted to read a few parts from this report. One, you know, "A wide range of barriers may undermine diversity at every stage of the recruitment, hiring, and selection process. There is substantial evidence that these barriers have made it difficult for underrepresented groups to secure positions in law enforcement." You know, what's that saying, is, you know, just kind of doing things the way we've always done them doesn't necessarily secure the best outcome. And so looking at new ways and creative ways makes sense. One more excerpt. "Traditional measures for hiring and training police officers and other law enforcement personnel not only have adverse impact on diversity, but also undermine the ability to attract the most qualified and effective individuals for important public safety jobs. By identifying the factors and skills that are critical to effective law enforcement, police departments and other agencies can design procedures that will attract individuals that are both highly qualified and diverse." This is why we need to move forward. It's why this is a very good step in improving trust and improving our ability as a council, as a police as a police force, as a community, to be safe. And I just want to thank, again, Missando for her report, and Chief Henthorn, and all our council members for the discussion and the ability to move forward on this item tonight.
Resolution has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is passed. City managers' report.
No, we still have number eight.
Number eight. Oh, I'm sorry.
Right.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, Tom.
And I'd like to have our city planner come up, because she's going to do some of the heavy work here. I don't want to be interrupted by that coughing that I normally do. So, this is consideration, consideration of the approval of, no, wait a minute, I'm reading the wrong one. Okay, consideration of the approval of a resolution granting a conditional use permit amendment and variance to allow an expanded outdoor recreational facility at the Academy of Holy Angels. The proposal includes a synthetic turf plain surface, field lighting, and an additional inflatable dome to be used seasonally. The Academy of Holy Angels, or Holy Angels, is proposing to expand and upgrade their outdoor recreational facilities. They propose to convert the current grass field in the southwest corner of their campus to a synthetic turf plain surface, and to add outdoor field lighting. They also propose a second inflatable dome to be used seasonally in conjunction with the existing Star Dome, which has been in use since 1996. The stated purpose for these changes is to optimize usage of the southwest field and provide for year-round practice opportunities. Heavy usage of the current grass field, as well as inclement weather, has led Holy Angels to conclude that the current plain field surface is an unacceptable condition. Holy Angels states that an all-weather plain surface would allow the field to be used for practice space more frequently and provide a better experience for the student athletes. The field would be used in the same manner as the grass field is currently used, primarily consisting of practices for football, soccer, lacrosse, baseball, softball, and track, as well as hosting some games for the lower-level teams. The proposed outdoor field lighting would allow the field to be used later in the evening. The addition of the second inflatable dome over the winter months would allow the facility to be used year-round. Hours of use for both the field lighting and the second dome would be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. throughout the year. Current hours for the existing dome are 6:00 a.m. to 12:30 a.m. And our city planner, if she would, Melissa, if you would, please help me out and just kind of, you know, you've worked on this, and she's also the staff person assigned to the planning commission, so she's very, very familiar, not only with this issue, but she's familiar with, you know, with listening to the residents that are opposing and the residents that support it. So, if you could help us out, we'd appreciate it.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Garcia. There are a couple of issues here. First of all, as you mentioned, a conditional use permit is needed to make these changes to the field to add an accessory building of this size. Generally, accessory buildings on school facilities are limited to smaller buildings. Today, if this campus were to be rebuilt, it would likely be done as a PUD, and it would be thought of more as a campus. And so, in terms of building size, this meets the requirements for a primary building on this space, which this would essentially function as. It does require a couple of variances. One of the requirements for outdoor recreational fields for school facilities is that they be set back 25 feet from the property line. The existing field is set back, I'm sorry, that they be set back 40 feet from the property line. The existing field is 25 feet back from the property line, and that will not change. A variance is needed, however, because this is considered an intensification of that use. Additional bleachers, lighting, and eventually, the building would be added. In addition, they are proposing to add lighting to the field. The light poles proposed are 80 feet tall. The city does not have codes that specifically regulate field lighting. We have codes that regulate parking lot lighting, landscape lighting, residential, or, I'm sorry, antenna towers, things like that, but we don't have any that specifically apply to field lighting. The poles at Richfield High School are similar in height, they're 70 to 80 feet tall. The poles in the city parks are approximately 60 to 70 feet tall. We've spoken to the lighting consultants here. Again, they're proposing 80 feet. And that 80-foot measure is specifically to reduce the glare and more, and target the light on the field, and not toward the adjacent homes. Those poles would only be 17 feet from the property line. Holy Angels did hold an open house for the neighborhood a few days before the official public hearing before the planning commission. And then, at the planning commission, a number of residents spoke about the proposal. Their concerns were primarily related to increased light and noise, aesthetic impacts. There were also complaints about the operations of the school currently, the way people cut across this field as it is now, to get to the dome or to get to the school for other Just to kind of close here, so this is, it's a conditional use permit and variance request, and there are technical requirements that go along with those that are detailed in your packet. But this really comes down to an issue of community character, which is something that the council needs to find, that this proposal is in keeping with, with the character of the community, and that there would not be adverse, undue adverse impacts related to public health, safety, and welfare. The planning commission voted four to one to approve the proposal. They did put a couple of additional conditions on that. One of them was that the new dome would be restricted, the hours would be restricted from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and that also, once that dome opened up, the hours of the existing Star Dome would be reduced. Currently, like we said earlier, they're 6:00 a.m. to 12:30 a.m., and those would be reduced from 6:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. And also, that no sound system be installed in the new dome. I'm happy to stand for questions.
Let me ask you, what about LED lighting? Has that been explored?
Yes, the, and Holy Angels representatives are here as well. But the lighting, these, the lighting that's installed these days is much more technically proficient, I guess. It's, it's doing exactly what you want it to do and not what you don't want it to do. There's not light spill. It's very targeted. You know, there is a photometric plan that came in along with this submittal, and it details where that light, you know, how much light is visible at those property lines. I don't think this is an issue of light spill because of the technology. There is a glare and spill from the existing lights. The planning commission did discuss with them the possibility of upgrading those facilities, and they can speak to that if you'd like. Yeah.
No, I appreciate, you know, the fact is, is that with the technology of today, you know, you can mitigate a lot of things that years ago were just really harsh and, you know, basically invasive of the surrounding area. So, that's, that's great. I don't know, Mayor, if you want to have folks speak to this issue from Holy Angels, or...
I, I know I recognize at least one, if not two, of the neighbors that were at the meeting over at the academy. It's not a public hearing, but if you felt it was, it was appropriate to show up, I think it's appropriate to let you speak. If you'd like to speak, come up to the, to the mic. I'd ask you to limit your comments. I know that we received a significant amount of emails indicating what some of the concerns are, and we recognize those. So, I want to give you an opportunity to speak, but please, you know, be brief and let us know what your feelings are. And if you're going to come up and speak, please sign in, speak into the mic for us. Go ahead.
I'm Sharon Miller. I live directly across the street, right square in the middle of the field that we're discussing, that the proposed, well, the dome is the thing that we are really hoping doesn't happen. At the last meeting with the commissioners, it seemed odd to us that a number, it was a packed house, almost everybody, it was packed here, and almost everybody spoke to it, people mostly around the area. They, they told quite descriptively why they didn't want a second dome, mostly because of the lights and the noise already coming to their bedroom windows and other places in the house from the first dome, and they are not looking forward to another one. My problem is a little different. I have my house up for sale right now, and it's directly across, as I said, in the middle of the dome. It's, I would like to know who would want to buy my house when I tell them there's going to be a dome going up right in front of them, very close. I'd like to, to let you know that we already hear daily, especially in the, in the winter, the smacks of the soccer balls every single night they're playing loudly with our windows closed in the house. And that seems enough to have to be putting up with. After listening for two hours to people talking about why they didn't want a second dome, it was ludicrous to hear the commissioners, all except one, sounding like they wanted to see the second dome. There was one out of seven that, I think it's seven, I'm not sure, that wanted, that was listening to the residents. It really seems odd that the residents in Richfield have no, they don't seem to matter to the commissioners, for sure, and I'm not sure they seem to matter to you folks. We have been asking you not to do that. We, we don't need a second dome. These are procedures that were negatively, they're going to negatively react on our families and our residents' homes. We plead with you that you would consider the residents. Don't the residents matter to any of you anymore? I mean, we need to start thinking about the residents and the families that live in these residences, and not look for ways to, to make it harder for them to live there, and people will leave. I think Richfield should consider that, and I hope you will. I personally have lived in Richfield for 70 years. My folks built the house I'm in now. I came with them as a child and have lived there, lived there with my house, in the house with my husband for 55 years before he passed away, just this year. And I would certainly like to see the house, be, continue as it is. The other thing I want to let you know is that if there's a dome there, one of the things that we truly love is seeing the sunrise and the moonrise over that field from Holy, from St. Peter's. Every morning, I race to open the curtains and watch that, the sunrise, and in the evening, the moons. With the dome there, we will not see that. And I know it's not going to be there every month, but it's enough. It's, it's, it's too much. That's, I just, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julie Meyer, and I have lived in Richfield for 22 years with my husband and my two children. One of the reasons we've stayed in Richfield is that the city has continued to grow, to develop its resources, and to renew itself, beautifying its, its resources and offering additional services. I think the Academy of Holy Angels has developed, along with Richfield, to be a centerpiece of the community in downtown Richfield. I'm aware of some of the objections of the neighbors to the doming of the fields at Holy Angels. I also hope that they, and you, will consider some of the benefits. Firstly, doming of the field will help contain children from going into the neighbors' yards and keep them more contained from wandering around the neighborhood, and will actually contain some of the noise. If you've been, like, over at the hub when the, when the dome has been down versus when the dome is up, I think you see, it, it does trap in some of the vocal noise that would otherwise carry, because those fields are currently in use for other, even prior to the dome. In addition, with the ability to rent the dome to outside groups, Holy Angels has the potential to bring more people and thus more revenue to the hub area businesses. And then finally, supporting Holy Angels helps the school support students in Richfield, as it has so generously for my own children, as they've continued through their high school years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Dan Becker. I'm a resident of Richfield. I live right between Holy Angels and Richfield High School. I did submit a letter in support of the project here. We're a family that moved to Richfield because of Holy Angels. We've moved close to Holy Angels because of our children attending the high school. It's a noise that we hear from both Richfield and Holy Angels, from the football games and other activities that are occurring at these campuses, and frankly, it's a, it's a welcome place for families that are involved. I mean, it's not like living by a fire station or right next to the airport or something. It's noise of activity that's beneficial to the community, and while it might be annoying at times, it's actually something that's welcome to us. We enjoy hearing the track meets and the football games, both at Richfield and at Holy Angels from our home, and we chose to move into that area even though we knew about that noise. As a high school student, I actually lived just a block away on Hillsbury instead of Blaisdell, and we chose to move to the exact same neighborhood with the same benefits. So, I hope that other folks that might feel that there's some detriment to living so close to the schools, I think there's a lot of families that feel that there's great benefits that outweigh that, that will draw them to the area, and might even bring them right to the, the house next to the campus, even closer for their children to be able to get over there, or to just enjoy the activity of youth and families. I know that the domes actually are quite busy, and there's, there's quite a community that gathers there. It's like listening to a celebration every night, and on the weekends, too. If any of you have visited the existing dome, you'll see a lot of families that are in there, and a great community of folks that all enjoy soccer, or whatever the sport might be, coming together and mixing together and enjoying some great activity. be, coming together and mixing together and enjoying some great activity that's a beneficial activity for our whole community, having people engaged in that instead of other activities that might not be as beneficial. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope that you approve.
Thank you. I know that Councilmember Howard has some questions. Is there a representative that would like to speak on behalf of Holy Angels or at least respond to Councilmember Howard's question?
Yeah, other council members might have questions as well. You know, this, we didn't have a work session on this, and so, you know, I might have more questions than normal, and I'll admit that it just seems like there hasn't been that much public discussion on this as compared to some other issues, and so that has given me reason for some concern and do want to just ask a few questions, in particular about potential impacts to the neighborhood.
Sure, absolutely. I'm Tom Shipley, president at Holy Angels, and thank you, council members and mayor, for the ability to be here tonight, and Councilmember Garcia for a great description of what this project is all about. I can answer some questions. I also, we also have Craig Larson from Opus here, who's helping us in the development side of this. If there are technical questions, I'll bring him up, but let's give it a whirl.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, this is your field, and there's clearly a need for, I do recognize there's a desire and need for these fields, for folks that are utilizing the current facility and otherwise, but there is, in listening to and receiving emails, and there's clear public impacts of the folks that live nearby. You know, one in particular of concern to me is the lighting issue. So I would like to hear more from, kind of, if someone could speak to the lighting, and I did understand that, you know, there isn't this potential impact into the neighborhood with those standards. I'll admit, I find it hard to believe that an 80-foot light that's 17 feet from a property line isn't going to have some fairly sizable impacts to the neighborhood. So I would, if someone could speak to the lighting.
I'm going to have Craig Larson from Opus come up. He's been working with the electrical engineers who are designing the project, so he can probably give you a better explanation.
Good evening. As Tom said, I'm Craig Larson, Facility Committee member at Holy Angels, as well as longtime employee at Opus Group. As far as the lighting, first of all, to Councilmember Garcia's question, the system we're proposing is using LED light fixtures, so we're really using the latest technology. And with that particular type of lamp and the fixtures that we're proposing, you really are able to achieve very precise control of that glare. That, you know, you're all used to seeing the lights from various athletic facilities on 20, 30, 40-foot-high poles, and you see that light shining. It's really shining more horizontally, so you see that bright spot from a long ways away. With the tall poles and the LED technology, we're able to focus that light directly onto the field space, so you don't get the glare, you also don't get the light spill. I mean, it's two separate things, the amount of light that lands on the ground outside the school's property, but as well as that glare that they give. So we're able to control both those and keep it from being like you experience, you know, from many other athletes, those in the parks, even in the city. I mean, you've got some of that light spill and glare problem.
Thank you. I guess my question is, if we were to move forward and approve this, what sort of assurances could you give that you'd work with the neighborhood? You know, I understand there's studies that saying this isn't going to be an impact. I'm not 100% convinced. I just want to know what Holy Angels would commit to do in working with the neighborhood if we approve this, and we do find out that, yes, there is some, the light is an issue for the community.
We'll basically work with our lighting consultant to make the appropriate adjustments in those fixtures. I mean, but that'd be part of their contract, is to design a system that meets the established criteria. So we'll have them under contract, and if we can measure and determine that we're not meeting that, we're going to go right back to the lighting designer and contractor and have them make those corrections.
Okay, so if there's issues, you'll meet with residents and see if you can find a solution?
Yep.
Okay. There was some discussion on the amount of time on the, in the planning commission that the facility is going to be open, and I understand seven to 10, that coincides with our noise ordinance. And there was some discussion about whether this would allow the other facility, which is currently open till 12:30 a.m., to scale back hours of operations. Is that something that you're prepared to commit to?
Yeah, the, one of the considerations when we were with the planning commission was, currently, the operating hours of the existing dome are 6:00 to 11:30. We agreed to reduce, or to 12:30. We agreed to reduce this to, from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., or 11:00 p.m., excuse me. So that is one of a number of considerations that we're willing to work with in the council.
The current dome is 6:00 to 12:30. We're agreeing to go back down to 11:30 end time on the, and then everything with the new dome would be 7:00 to 10:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you. And just another question, the, I know we've heard from other groups and things in the community about just access to parks and things like that, and this will obviously be managed by Holy Angels, but you're going to be in a neighborhood, and I'm just wondering what kind of access at the park there might be for community members, of which, you know, you're in their neighborhood.
Right, and we talked about that. What we would like to do is make the facility accessible to neighbors with, you know, some sort of controls. Obviously, we just can't, you know, allow people on it every, any time of the day and whatever. They're going to need to follow whatever regulations that we can set up and we can work with them on, and we've talked about that, some different ways that we can do it. We've also contacted our insurance company in making sure that, you know, there's not liability issues, which there will be, so we'll need to work with the neighborhood on that as well. But we want to be a good neighbor here, and we want to be able to have it accessible, and we really feel that with the fencing that we're going to have, it should stop a lot of the traffic in the neighborhood, because really, the only access point is going to be from within the campus. You're not going to be able to access, except for the neighbors who, where we would have a gate, and we'd have some kind of accessibility. So we really think that that would be a plus all around.
Right, thank you. Just a question for staff on some of these, you know, we had a discussion with the 66th Street Development about ways we'd kind of monitor a situation where we don't really know for sure the impacts yet. Is that something at a staff level that we can commit to either through an amendment to this or otherwise to study the light into the, or the noise into the community?
It doesn't make sense.
It is certainly something you can add to the resolution. You know, these conditions are in the resolution. Typically, that is handled by, if something goes up and there's a complaint, we figure out a way to manage that. The city does not have a light meter. The city does not own a noise meter. Those are things that, if a complaint comes in, we typically contract that out. We find another city who we can borrow those things from, but we don't have them, like, you can't, wouldn't be something where staff could commit to going out and taking measurements immediately after it opens. We just don't have the equipment.
Sure. I'd be curious what other folks think. I just think it's something we might want to consider to provide some level of comfort to residents that, that as a staff and council, that we're going to monitor the situation and listen to their concerns if it moves forward, so.
You know, it's not unlike the complaints at the new buffet. I mean, it's two complaints, but it's not a terribly objective standard, and I would expect that the simple, the simple answer is we've got, we have public nuisance statutes, those read across the board, and that's a pretty elusive definition, but it's a protected device in place. I know that, I was at the first meeting over at the academy. We were in a work session, but I listened to a large part of the planning commission, and I think Mr. Shipley had indicated, and I've heard it said a couple times, and I realize that there's restraints on what you can do. I think the verbiage was something like, "We'll give you a key to the gate." You can't do that, and I understand that, between liability and some other things. But one thing I would like to see is like Councilmember Howard said, once, if and when it does pass, and once it's up and operational and stuff, you don't lose the commitment to the neighbors. We're here, like it or leave it, because that's not how Richfield's going to work. So you got to continue the accommodation, you got to continue listening, you got to continue to work with the neighbors. And one of the saddest comments, or things I've seen in the last 20 or 30 years is, "My son lives down about Red Cross from Southwest High School's football field, and that thing's chain locked, chained and locked tighter than a drum." I mean, you got a great quarter-mile track, you can go do your running, you can do whatever you want, but you can't get in the field. It's the same thing here. You've got, you've got domes in the winter, and understanding that you're running them out, and you've got rental space, but it seems to me that if I lived there and I wanted to run, I'd rather run in that dome, run around the circle, or get my exercise where it's warm, and maybe divert myself by watching a soccer game. I think that the best things you can do is accommodate the neighbors. You can't open it, you can't give them free rein in going in and out, but you got to work out some sort of schedule so they can get in and benefit from having an indoor track and things like that, and so they're feeling that, not only that it's part of the neighborhood, they're part of the dome, they're part of the facility. So the more you can share, the less likely it is that you're going to be back here, and we're going to have neighbors in here saying, you know, "This is just not working." We all want it to work, and I understand when you're trying to sell your house, I, you know, I'm not a realtor. I can't tell you if that's going to have an impact up and impact down, or just be negative across the board in regards to the sale of your house. I do know we've heard one person speak that it was an attraction for him. It may well be a traction for someone else, and you may be surprised what you get for your house. I mean, that's just the way it works. But the commitment I need is a commitment to be as good to the neighbors as you've talked about, and I've got no reason to believe that's not going to happen, but just keep it in the back of your mind that that's one of the commitments you made to the neighbors, and you're making to us up here who are going to rule on it. So we take our commitment seriously, and I know you do, too, so just, you know, abide by them. That's all I'm asking for.
Mr. Mayor, I know that Holy Angels, you did have a staff person that went door-to-door, did you not? And then you had a neighborhood meeting, right? And I know the, then the planning commission had their meeting and, you know, public hearing, and we've received emails both for and against the proposal. You know, when, and I know that we have a very able staff, and they're good listeners when it comes to people that are opposed to a particular proposal, and they're very, very smart about helping mitigate, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the perceived problems or concerns. And the other thing I know about Holy Angels is, you know, quite frankly, Holy Angels is community. Holy Angels is a valuable school to the city of Richfield, and Holy Angels has got a beautiful campus, and I know that you, you know, when you talk about maybe a little extra revenue, nowadays, sadly to say, you know, schools have got to be creative about, about, you know, trying to bring in more revenue in order to make ends meet, and so I certainly appreciate that. But, you know, just like Richfield High School, we value that, and we value Holy Angels just as much, and like I said, I, you know, we take you at your word because, you know, when the public turns out, we have, we will listen, and we will, you know, hopefully, you will continue to be listening as you open that new dome, and as you work with neighbors and try to, you know, try to solicit some information from them and see how you can kind of work those problems out. I would anticipate that your interest is in having a good school that's good, you know, for you, and it's good for the community, and that's really, that's why I'm going to support this proposal, and I hope that, you know, that things will work out. Keep in mind, one thing is that the staff will be more than happy to help you. If you have any kind of questions or any ideas, they will work with you. We can't, we can't go and babysit everything that's going on. That's just, just not feasible, and it's really kind of ridiculous because, you know, you're a responsible school, and so, but the staff is available to come to, you know, to your, to your, you know, to bringing everybody together and working things out, but I trust that that won't be necessary, that you can work with the community.
Any other comments? Do you have a motion?
I guess just one last commitment I'd hope to get if this moves forward, is just regular meetings throughout any sort of construction process with residents, you know, to update them on what's, what's going on, giving them a chance to weigh in so that every step of the way, the community members know what's going on in their backyard and have a voice in this.
Right, and we've readily planned for that, to get back to the neighbors, talk about the construction timeline and what it's going to do. We've got a number of ideas to share with them that will be helpful in not only the construction, but ultimately with the, with the project itself. We also are committed to a 24-hour hotline that we've already checked into, where neighbors can call if they're hearing overt noises and those kinds of things. We'll get back to them right away. You know, like I said earlier, we want to be good neighbors, and, you know, we're not blind or deaf to the concerns that the neighbors have, and we want to work with them, we want to talk about ways that we can solve some of the traffic problems, ingress egress, maybe some speed bumps, some additional signing for our students, those kinds of things, and hopefully, working together, it'll be a great project, and down the road, people will say, "It was well worth it."
No, I agree that working with the neighborhood will, you know, it's, only good can come of it.
Correct.
Because then they'll feel some ownership, you know, when, when the dome is up and running, and I think that's smart to do that, and I thank you for thinking ahead.
Okay, thank you.
And providing that hotline.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I will renew my motion that we approve of the resolution granting an amended conditional use permit and variances to allow construction of a synthetic turf plain surface, field lighting, and an additional inflatable dome at the Academy of Holy Angels.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you, everyone.
And I wanted to say something to Melissa. Melissa, oftentimes, it comes to the meetings when her boss is, Mr. Stark, is unavailable. Now, I want you to answer this question, okay?
Okay.
Okay, now answer, you know, answer the question directly. Is Mr. Stark out partying tonight?
You know, in fact, he is, and I know that because it is his son's 16th birthday.
Right, right, okay. Thank you very much, you've done a good job. Appreciate it.
City manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I guess I really don't have a specific report this evening.
Okay, I was going to wait till the room cleared before I got on to item 10, because the list you sent me, I forgot to bring. That's an inside joke. Item number 10 requires me to provide a summary review of the city manager's annual performance evaluation for 2016, held on May 24, 2017, as required by Minstat 13D.05 subdivision We went into conference at the last city council meeting to evaluate and determine a raise for the city manager. We'd been provided with a bullet points on the major points of progress in the city over the past year, some disappointments on things that maybe didn't quite get completed, and just a general assessment of the fiscal, emotional, and condition of the community as a whole. Minnesota statutes require that, that I provide some substance for the, for the raise that we actually gave to, to the city manager. And I think that, that without getting too deep into the weeds, I think we can talk on, on general issues. We can start fiscally first of all. When I first came on the city council eight and a half years ago, local government aid would, would be certified and then taken away. And a lot of different financial difficulties were, were faced by not only this community, but a lot of the communities metro-wide. And through concentrated effort of the city manager, together with our financial manager, we managed to pretty much wean ourselves from local government aid. The city manager in conjunction with staff found additional sources of revenue. And I think we are, we're one of maybe two or three communities that had the bond rating actually go up instead of down in the past eight years. There has been a rejuvenation of, of spirit and camaraderie among the staff and the people that work here that's, that's partially, not due to salaries, it's due to the, to the can-do atmosphere. And not to revert back to military, but esprit de corps that develops when you're working for an organization you, you truly appreciate and you love and you get along with. It, it makes all the difference. That all comes from the top. You can't, you can't lead if, if you don't know how to do it and if you can't convey trust and strength into the people that, that are looking to you for guidance and leadership. So fiscally, we, we are as, as strong as we've been in the last 10 years. And, and every evidence that both from a commercial base and a residential base is continuing to go upward. I think that you, you look at the, the city clerk, the revenues there are expanded. I think if they didn't double, they're almost close to it. The liquor stores, which provide a lot of the, the revenue for our parks and recreation, despite the fact of big box liquor stores that are seriously making serious inroads and edine and other community liquor stores are having an impact here, but they haven't had nearly the impact they've had on other communities. That all comes from, from the city manager and the staff he's put in place and going down. So if in fact, the, the Mr. Nobles or any other auditor on the state staff or anything else needs more particulars, they can call me anytime. But I think the, the last thing I would say is, is what is the epitome of what Mr. DeVich means to Richfield and, and what he feels of, about the city he's worked for for so long is that he turned down a raise that would have been something more than his staff had gotten because he didn't think he deserved any more than the people that worked with him and for him. So with that being said, I think that's full justification for the raise. And once again, if Mr. Nobles needs more, he can call me.
And we are blessed to have you.
Claims and payroll.
Mr. Mayor, I will move claims and payroll. And, and I want to make sure that Mr. Troutman knows that, you know, as a rookie, some people would say neophyte. But then, when I said that to you, you had to look it up in the dictionary. So I, I thought I would just stick with rookie.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Yeah. So that, you know, the claims and payroll stays here and here with the, with the senior members of the city council who are extremely competent.
Experienced.
And always are striving to work well with the staff. And, and the staff really appreciates that we do such a good job. So if I'm ever absent, then at that point, then the mayor would move claims and payroll. So you got, you have, you got, understand that?
Understood.
Okay, good. So I will move claims and payroll.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Claims and payroll is passed. There being no further business, this council meeting is adjourned.